All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, June 15, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. Town Hall Rose Room. We will all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors that would like to be recognized? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the June 1, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Pass this, thank you. Next up are the, it looks like these are all just reappointments?
Yes.
Yes, all reappointments. So, we have three on for tonight. We have Dave Adams, unaffiliated for the Harbor Commission, for a term until 6:30, 2026. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next is Todd Higgins, unaffiliated for the Harbor Commission, again for a term until 6:30, 2026. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. And lastly, Tanya Abatello, Eric Bergman, and Catherine Zimneckic, Sustainability Committee, until 6:30, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I saw Kathy in the garden today, and she said she wasn't intending to be on the sustainability, and that she'd get in touch with you.
Okay, but she did notify me that she wanted to be reappointed.
Okay, so we'll have--
Because I reached out to them, and she emailed me and said that she--
Okay. Just saying.
Yep.
Just in case.
So what, can we--
It was a conservation that she's going to be on. But she, she thought maybe she had miscommunicated that. But--
Okay.
I don't want to get in the way, I just want to mention that.
Do you want to table the Catherine Zimneckic portion, and just do the motion on the first two?
Well, Catherine told Mary that she wanted to do it.
She did email me and say--
Was it after today? Was it today?
No, it was earlier.
Yeah, because I was here today, but just saying.
I don't always go back.
Right, she can always send in a letter for a present.
Yeah, because she didn't send a letter for a present.
Yes.
Can you two stop talking? You two, stop talking. I'm sorry. They're going to get me. You two are--
I'm going to sit over there next.
All right. So do we? All right, motion to approve the appointment, reappointment.
We have--
Is it already on?
Yes.
Discussion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. Item number five, poet laureate update. We have Kathy Weiss with her, with us here tonight. Kathy?
Thank you so much. I, just before I begin, I want to thank everyone for putting their confidence in me, and I understand that, I think Christine, and maybe the Arts Council started this original when you were first selected, and I really appreciate the support of Carl and Chris over the past year. I sent a quarterly update. I wanted to give you an update for what I have done with the year, and I have my three-year plan. I will have to give you my copy, I wasn't sure, I didn't want you to be here when I leave, I'll give you my copy. And I don't need to make another presentation, I'll continue to give Carl and Chris an update.
Thank you.
And I do, I'm doing this tonight, I want to be absolutely clear. I don't need any applause or whatever. I feel I did a good job because you gave me, you put your confidence in me, I wanted to repay you, and I want to thank you for that by doing the best job I could do, especially during the pandemic. So, to be clear, I just, I'm going to need your support more than anything else, more than praise, more than anything, because I have some programs going on, and I noticed that when I did, I've been doing things in the community, for example, most recently, after the Memorial Day parade, people came up to me, "Oh, I didn't know we had a poet laureate. Oh, your words meant so much to me." Or, when I did the big benefit concert for mental health, so many people came up to me and told me how, how much. People came from all over Connecticut, and, and so it's, I want to continue, you know, what you started. So I want to, if we don't, I put, the other reason I prepared a packet, okay? This is, this serves a lot of purposes. First of all, something happens to me, you have everything right here, I redid the job description, I didn't change it, I just retyped it. Please don't look at things until, I'm just going to do it page by page. So, I don't need to go over my first, the first page, you can read it, I more than fulfilled my job description. And, but the second page, page two of my year-end summary, this is where I need the support. I'm trying to do this portraits of Clinton poetry project, and I've collected about seventeen poems, I've been interviewing some seniors, some of the high school kids have participated. And what my intention is, this started with one of our interns, and our intention is to publish an anthology. Some of the poems have been published. I am so particularly proud of the Morgan School. When Mrs. Shawsey and Eric Bergman asked me, well, they actually asked Pat Barone, but she passed it to me, she had caregiving issues. In fact, I should probably thank Pat as well, because when she came to me saying that she wanted me to lead the next poet laureate, I'm, you know, it's because of her, too, that I'm here. But she passed this assignment to me, and it was so important to me because I had a high, high-risk kids. When I first started working with them, I don't want this on camera, they're, they're very depressed, they were writing about committing suicide. And by the end of the year, they all got published, and I told them to take this to their college applications and say, you know, their interviews and say, this is the kind of work I'm capable of doing, I've helped them build portfolios. So, out of everything I've done, all the fundraising I did, all the, I do have a part-time job, too, you know, work for a foundation. So, this is, was my best, most wonderful thing that I did. And I didn't have the time to do it, but I made the time because my gut was screaming, "Do it." And, so a lot of the kids got published, they featured the Morgan School, so we want to publish an anthology like this with the portrait poem, or right now, we have enough to, to publish an anthology like this. But before I go further with this project, I need to know what, you know, what everyone thinks about it. I did get, win a, could be a finalist in a contest, a national contest through an Arts Council, and I kind of like this format, although I'd have to learn how to do it. I know how to publish on Amazon, but I don't know how to publish with this program. So my poem, but I thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if we had, you know, photographs of Clinton and the portrait poems of people? I also had, someone from the Stanton House did a portrait poem, and they featured it in here, about the Stanton House, and we have a lot of the students in here as well, they featured the paw print. So the kids have really been enjoying it, there were no opportunities for them, there was no opportunities for them during the pandemic. So this gave them some, something to put on their college resumes. And from that, I have three interns. Now, some of you may know about Rodriguez, I've been coaching him for a year, I've helped him build a portfolio, and he, if something, if I get sick or something, he could easily take over. He, he knows how to teach the Portrait Poetry Workshop, I've been coaching him to read. The other two interns are, they, they, they really have a lot of, they have a lot to come along. One is, I'm working with them, I've, I've decided to take them on. So, so this is what I'm doing in the schools, and the Portraits of Clinton Poetry Project, on page two of my summary, this explains the project, and I wanted you to have it because this will help you understand what I'm doing. The other thing, and I already talked about the Morgan School and the internship. I'm the only one in Connecticut of poet laureates that has an internship, and everybody wants to copy me, everybody wants to copy me on the Morgan School. This is published out of Troy, New York, and the editor said that everybody was calling him to feature their school, but he really liked, he really liked the students' work. State Senator, Dr. Sardanoir, who has a goal of having a poet laureate in every town, and so far, there's only about thirty-six, we just have two new ones in the state, out of one hundred and sixty-nine towns. So I want to commend you, and thank you so much for supporting this, because I really think this is important. If you see the facts about poetry, the, with the National Endowment of the Arts, and all the research on the popularity of it and the healing benefits of it, and that's why I wanted to do the Portraits of Clinton Poetry Project. I feel we're all disconnected, I mean, I've lived here fourteen years, if any of you could answer three questions about me, I'll give you a hundred dollars towards your favorite charity. I mean, am I, what's my husband's name? Do I have kids? Where did I go to school? I don't feel that, I feel that we need to reconnect to each other. So I'm, I'm collecting poems about people and their lives, and it's been quite rewarding for me. So, we can stop here, and I can do a little one, or if you think this is a worthwhile project, we can go on. Because I don't want, have enough time, I have a little sheet at the end, you can fill out at your convenience with a self-stamped addressed envelope. So I have been elected to the Connecticut Coalition of Poet Laureates, big honor, I'm on the Board of Directors, it's a bipartisan group, and they have tasked me, they have identified me as a person who can build community, and so I'm going to be building regional communities, and I'm also tasked with keeping a list of every poet laureate in the state, which will give us a wonderful opportunity if we ever want to have readings or tap into that talent, I will have it at my fingertips. So that's that. Now, I have my, I completed a year, I have my two-year, my next two years mapped out, it just happened this way, I'm in the middle of things. So, this is what I'm going to be doing, there's, there won't be any need for me to come and present, I will continue to update Chris and Carl quarterly, but I'm going to need to have your support. The next page is, just, I just redid the, the job description that you gave me, so, so it looks nice. And like I said, if something happens to me, this is also something that, you know, you have what I'm doing, you have all the resources. Here's the internship, please don't share it with anybody, but it's, like I said, because I'm publishing, doing, publishing this and the results. Nobody else has this, it's been very successful. I'm helping kids build portfolios, you know, they don't, we have, one girl I took on, she can't afford to go to college, so she's working two jobs in Clinton, and I'm help, she really wants to be a writer, and she's a good writer, she, I had her in Mr. Bergman's class this semester, and she won a contest, but she can't afford to go to college, so I'm helping her with her entrance letter, I'm helping her build a portfolio. So, I think my internship prob, now, I have, here's an example of my mission, I'm serving, I'm not a poet laureate that wants to publish and, you know, care about doing my own readings, I really care about community, and I did a series of workshops this summer on a porch that I rented at my own expense because of COVID, and I appeal to all ages, and I feel that it's successful. I think we could move on to my legacy. I, I want to, I want to leave something to the town, I do have some things, some ideas. First and foremost, I really want, I really feel like I need a reception, I couldn't, didn't have one during COVID, Sarah at the library is willing to give me one, I need to lock down a date with you, I want some support around that. I have been going to receptions all over Connecticut because my job is to welcome new laureates, give them a mug, and we have an anthology of what other laureates in the state have done in their communities, and they've left things, you know, they have left things in their community that wasn't there before. So the two things that I really like is, I think we should have a plaque, maybe Pat Barone could have one, too, she was the inaugural laureate, and then, you know, if you continue on this tradition, I think it's very worthwhile, I think all the laureates should have a plaque somewhere in town, perhaps at the Town Hall, or perhaps at the library. All of the other towns do that, and I think that, I think that we should, too. And the other thing that I like is a bench. I'm working with the Community Foundation in Middlesex County, there's a school in Durham for youth at risk, boys at risk, and they have a woodworking program, and they've been paint, they've been constructing these benches, and they have been all over Middletown and different towns, and I could purchase one through the Community Foundation. I have enough funds in the Sunrise Fund that I started during the pandemic, and I would really love to have a poetry bench somewhere, maybe at the library, just somewhere where we can go. Those are my two favorite ideas. I've done an enormous amount of research on scholarships, I'm really not liking a scholarship as a legacy, I guess maybe I'll look at it another time, but right now, the money that I have raised in the Sunrise Fund, I don't really want to put into Big and Dominique because I want to see what, where I can spend it, and I'm kind of leaning towards arts and mostly mental health at this point in time, so I don't really want to do that. The other thing is, when I was, I started a foundation at, seven years ago, at the Connecticut Transit, I was on the board, I was supposed to save the dial run, and you have my bus, I don't know if you see my bus? I'm going to buy this bus, they're going to retire it. Look at this, this is Clinton, this is the Marsh, I did this. I raised more than ten thousand rides. When Daniel Malloy increased my ride from two sixty to three dollars, you know, people, it sounds like forty cents, but if somebody's going to dialysis, or radiation, or whatnot, you know, it's forty dollars a month, that could be a prescription or something. So, I and a couple other women decided to do something about it. So I started a foundation, and Senator Blumenthal and Murphy supported it, and so we have this bus, it's gorgeous, and you know what, I saw it on ninety-five the other day in college, I'm going to get that bus, I don't want to turn it into a food truck, because that's Clinton, and it's a beautiful bus. So, I'm going to buy the bus, if the town wants it, think of something to do with it, you could have it first, but I'm going to buy this bus because it has a hydraulic system, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe we can give it to Estuary, I don't know, I just, I just don't want, I just don't want this to turn into a food truck, just don't. So, this could be a legacy, this could be a poetry bus, you know, I did go and I did deliver food and poems twice in the winter to seniors. I'm a, I'm a community poet laureate, that's my thing. You know, I don't call myself a poet, yeah, I write poetry, yes, it's okay, but I'm very proud to call myself a poet laureate and serve the town. So I realize that you have a long agenda, so I have given you a sheet, you can get back to me with what you think of my ideas, but before I leave tonight, I'd just like to know, I have your support. You know, we need to get the word out that we have a poet laureate, and, you know, during the pandemic, I was very active, but I really, maybe, Carl, if you could put it in this events calendar, that's another advantage of this packet, you have everything here, facts, all kinds of facts, facts what I'm doing, making it easy for you. So there's a self-stamped addressed envelope, if you could just get your opinions to me, be kind, by August 1st, then I'll decide what to work on for my legacy. And, you know, I'm still going to go back to the schools, I'm, I'm really booked, and I really put an enormous amount of hours, an enormous amount of hours in this town, in all of my volunteering. Does anybody know what the federal government allows, and when you write grants, the value of volunteer hour? Twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. I volunteered between setting up the Seat Cat and all the other kinds of things I've done in my laureate, twenty-one hundred fifty hours that translates into sixty-nine thousand dollars a year that you could put on a grant for incline support. So I've worked very hard, and I'm glad to work hard, and I'm very, very happy that you decided to support a laureate, because not all towns have them. So thank you very much. Questions? Tried to get a lot in, I won't need to come back for a long time.
Questions?
No, thank you for all this.
Thank you, Kathy, for all the work you've done so far, and again, we can probably circle back and put this on an agenda later on and discuss, you know--
If you decide on the bus, you can do whatever you want with it, I'll buy it, I mean, there's a lot of uses, I have ideas, but that's not why I was really here, but--
Thank you, Kathy. All right. So, next up is, before we go to six, I need to make, or look for a motion to amend the agenda to add another item as relates to the EDC. I went to the meeting last night, and I just wanted to discuss something with the council, so look for a motion to amend the agenda to include an EDC discussion.
The motion--
Make it number five A.
Yeah, make it five A.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, thank you. Tom was away, so I attended the EDC meeting last night at the Police Department, and one of the items on their agenda item was, on their agenda was town, the wayfinding signage, again. So, they had another lengthy discussion about it, at the end, they actually came to a conclusion that they wanted to move forward, final answer, final answer, they say final answer, with signage, and making it as like, which was the original discussion that we had, which is replacing the signs on Commerce and Grove as like, updating the names, if there's names that they needed to be updated or changed, removing businesses that are no longer open. And then the sign at sixty-three would be how we discussed previously, which was just giving directional restaurants, marinas, and that. So, they did discuss it, there was a motion to approve it, it was unanimous at approval, so that's what they've decided, again, at their meeting last night, so I needed to bring it forthback to everybody here, because the last meeting we had, we were doing two different signs at Commerce and Grove. So, we're just trying to move this project forward and get these signs, you know, taken care of and updated. So, now I will look for a motion to, to continue with the wayfinding signage and preparing the signs as like. So Commerce and Grove, as they are now, just updated with the, with the names of the businesses. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do you have them in a graphic form, or they just--
We've been ad nauseam with these, we have them all over the place, I mean, we've discussed this at length.
So are they, they going to be text, or are they going to be--
They're going to be exactly--
But they're going to have text, or they're going to have logos included?
We talked about this for half an hour in the last meeting.
It's going to be, the name of the business is put on the sign as it was, as they are now.
With the logos.
There's no logos, it's the name of the, name of the business, I mean--
So not the blue and white?
The blue and white.
The blue and white.
Just saying.
Just like they were before, okay? That's what we're doing.
I just want to say amen.
Any, yes, we're going to say amen. Any other discussion?
Just amen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to Fire Department Facilities study follow-up. So they just wanted us to actually have a quick discussion about the council giving authorization to Carl to speak, should they be engaged in any conversations as it relates to what they're looking to do based upon our last study. So they just want to make sure if there's something that they need to engage Carl with at that level, that we're okay with Carl speaking with them in regards to that. So basically, just, you know, keeping an open dialogue between the Fire Department and the town manager as it relates to what they're doing going forward.
And then we get to hear as it comes--
Correct. So at least we have an ear there.
That makes sense.
Basically what you're looking for, yeah, okay. So is everybody good with that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number seven, which is the approval of the Town Planner slash Land Use Administrator, Administrator, job description. So we all have a copy of it in here. I guess we'll just open it up, is everybody comfortable, and did they have any questions on the job description as presented?
I have two questions. One is, it directs the daily operation of the Land Use Office, oversees staff preparation of appropriate documents, et cetera, that's number four, under essential duties. So water pollution would not enter into any part of this person's job description, or would it? It's not enumerated here, and I certainly understand the distance, the difference, but do you think it should be or not? It should be, I mean, there's, at this point, there's no direct supervision of the water pollution clerk, is that something that maybe could go in here?
You could add it.
Yeah, we could.
I mean, just for the sake of there being some supervision--
Yeah.
--of that employee.
Okay.
I assumed it was implied.
It can be listed, that's--
The only thing that stuck out to me was all of those heavy-duty responsibilities, and then six, assist customers at the counter.
Well, they do, they do that, yeah.
When there's nobody in the office, somebody--
Got it. No, John, it is often called on to go to the--
The planner should be doing some public contact, that's usual and standard expectation.
I do have another question.
Yep.
Under essential duties and responsibilities, again, item one, prepares and coordinates preparation of studies, blah, 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 the third sentence, recommendations on matters related to land use development, zoning, subdivision, stormwater management, and inland wetlands issue. Would this, would there be any mention of flood activity, of oversight, I don't even know what you, how you would phrase that, but would should flood be mentioned in there somehow? Because I believe, at this point, Kathy King is getting herself trained to be the flood authority for the town, I just didn't know if this was appropriate to be, if flood was appropriate to be listed there or not.
I wasn't trying to write this to be that granular, I mean--
Oh, okay, all right.
It's included in land use development because flood elevations are important for land use development, so if it needs to be listed--
I mean, it is part of land use development, it is, I mean, overall, it's in that, that part of that area, so you're right, it doesn't have to be in there, it's just, it doesn't have to be enumerated, but I was just curious.
Some of the flood responsibility is specific to Kathy's job description. So that's her job, that's union work.
And because this person oversees her, at the end of the day, it would be under their--
They should be knowledgeable of all those land development issues.
Okay, good, that's it for me.
Anyone else? No, good. All right, motion to move forward with the job description as presented?
So moved.
Or adding, I guess adding, what are we adding?
Listing the WPCC clerk as supervision provided.
Okay.
So moved with the amendments?
Yep. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think it looks terrific, Carl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like as soon as the budget-- Yes, I would think. Well, I don't know.
All right, now, item number eight, which is the appropriation of ARPA funds to address summer food insecurity.
So this comes as a request from Families Helping Families, looking to have a partnership with town, Board of Ed, and themselves for providing food to students during the summer months. During COVID, there were pack-and-go lunches were provided, there were special stipulations granted under USDA and the food programs that the schools operate under, so it was kind of like a grab-and-go lunch thing. So those special circumstances have now gone away, Board of Ed cannot operate in that fashion. So we had a conversation with Minor and the superintendent of schools, her food service supervisor, to figure out what the path forward would be, what the delivery system would be, and the population to be served, so. They did receive a grant that would-- So they did receive a grant that would provide food for some people participating in one of their programs through the Y. This would sort of pick up more of those kids to carry them a little bit further into the summer. So it would be sort of a cost share between town ARPA funds and Families Helping Families at least for this summer. And then there's got to be a broader conversation over, is this something that carries forward into future summers and who's the delivery system for it? So the cost of the program in total is $5,548. 65% of that is our students that would be considered low to moderate income, which is the eligible criteria under ARPA. So the town would be putting in $3,610 under ARPA and then Families Helping Families would put in another 1,900 and that would run out a program that would deliver lunches to 73 students during, during the balance of the summer. So that would require a transfer at this point between some of the ARPA buckets. This is a quick overview of what's been spent against the categories that were approved at the town meeting. So been a lot of activity under nonprofit assistance. Clearly we're close to being oversubscribed on that column. And when the second tranche of cash comes in, we may need to backfill that a little bit more. Which are site plan, that's under WPCC. For housing, that the housing authority is now moving on that one. Cybersecurity was a quick move to try and get those things lined up before we have to renew our insurances. So the areas where you might transfer that from would be service local businesses, which was really a recovery consultant to assist businesses with whatever their needs were in coming back from COVID. There is some interest in the small business assistance at 300,000, but I'm not seeing where there's strong demand for the consultancy. So you, the council could authorize a transfer of $3,610 from local business, local services, local business into. Technically it could be housing utility assistance. It's an eligible expense under the category that was provided. That's your addressing food insecurity for those that have been negatively economically impacted. To date, the expenses have been more bills, tax bills, things of that nature, but in this particular case, it would be paying the Board of Ed as a vendor for their food service to generate these lunches. And then Families Helping Families would also cut a check. So that's the approach. Minor is very passionate about this project, wants to see it continue to go forward. There has to be a larger conversation going into next year for where it resides, whose budget it's in and how to do it in the future, but this would be an approach to get it going for the current fiscal year.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. Further discussion?
I think it's fantastic that the town's working. I'm glad we have the ARPA money to be able to do that.
More else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number nine, line item transfers, Public Works, Fire Department, Police, Civil Preparedness and Park and Rec. First up is the DPW transfer to increase the account, library masonry ceiling, 594484 and decrease police store replacement for the same amount. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number, or the next one is the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department, increasing utility costs, 99222, an increase coming out of stationery and supplies for 99222. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next up is the police, cover additional lease expenses for Schedule VII fiscal year 21, police vehicles paid through capital. They would need to increase 68236 and decrease fiscal year 2022 patrol vehicles 68236. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next is parks and rec. Vacation payout, steep increase, overtime was an estimated unexpected $5,000 deductible. Do you want to just briefly cover what happened there? Deductible?
Over the tree. This was damaged in one of the park and rec facilities. Trying to move it forward with repairs, Bo didn't anticipate the need to pay the deductible.
So that's what that one's for. So we're doing a increase of salaries, full-time 4,500, overtime 1,000, repairs and maintenance 3,000. And these funds will come from salaries, part-time 5,500 and general maintenance 3,000. Motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Lastly, civil preparedness for the purchase of emergency supplies. This will be coming, general supplies 3,500, come from salaries 2,500 and training 1,000. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. These two talking again. All right, item number 10, capital carry forward request.
We've got the, this is tied here to do capital carry forwards. This would be capital projects where there is still life to be completed and it's beyond the policy of the town. So it needs to be carried forward to move forward, to carry out into another fiscal year for projects either to be completed, started or closed out. You've got a listing of projects with an explanation. You've got anticipated completion dates and the dollar amount that's requested to carry over. Summary sheet that was provided speaks to the amount to be carried over as well as the amount that can be closed out.
Some questions?
I don't see here that has been in capital is the money for land use, the renovation of the land use office. Shouldn't that be on here somewhere?
Yes, it's in there under FY20 Wassam Electric upgrade at 20,000.
Under the electrical up 20,000?
That was the line item title that it was given at the time. Electrical work will need to be done. Other stuff needs to be done. Public Works is going to cover some of the labor expense.
If I could hear you, it would be marvelous, but I can't hear you.
You need to yell.
Public Works will be doing a lot of the work, but we do need to bring in outside folks and electrical is some of the work that needs to get done.
Okay, so but.
It's in there as a carryover.
All right, okay. Gotcha.
Anybody else?
In the sidewalk, is that the sidewalk down closer to Stop and Shop? The first sidewalk, not the study. 59234.
Which I asked is to carry it over.
Yeah. But was that from the original project?
Yes, you're carrying over the, still the line item that was there.
If, say, say land use has to be 30,000.
Any other questions? Okay, no, you guys listen, you guys have your little sidebar, just a minute please.
No, no, just scrutinizing here.
He's scrutinizing. You don't dance.
This is all the money we're carrying over. No, I just wonder why, you know, we give these people all this money, tie it up.
You're carrying over reserves for, for fire apparatus.
I'm not talking about the fire department so much.
Well, that's a big-ish number.
That's the biggest shopper?
That's a, that's a big number. That's, that's $225,000 out of a $1.2 million carryover. The other one is the NCRS flood repair work. That's another 300,000. So you've got half a million between those two projects. One is a reserve account which should exist and keep going forward and the other is for a project that we're anticipating closing out soon.
So it's still in.
Keep in mind the contractors, remember you have contractors, delays and trying to get vendors and, and all that. So it impacts the town. And we're busy.
Good?
I guess.
All right. So we'll look for a, we need to motion to approval, please? Yep?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? You guys voting in favor? Are they done? Are you guys, you're, you're voting in favor, right?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to make sure.
In favor.
A lot of sidebars tonight. All right, okay. Moving on now to item number 11, Finance Director's Report.
Hi, everybody. We're reviewing May this month. We're, that's the 11th month of the year, one month to go. Month of May revenues, I'll go over first, were $542,000 for the month. 300,000 of that was grant revenues that were received. 158,000 of that grant revenue was FEMA. We received $400,000 in the FEMA funds and this is for the flash flood of 2018, funds that we were owed. A portion of the 400,000 we received in that was recorded as revenue last year, 158 of it's recorded this year. So that's revenue that wasn't budgeted, so that's additional revenue to us. The only other piece related to that project is some revenues that will still be coming in from NRCS at some point. Okay, that was money still have, we still have a final payment due from that. The other grant money was 84,000 of the LoCIP money, that's a local capital improvement given to us by the state. We submit construction projects or technology projects or anything that can be, falls into their parameters. We submitted two projects from the town and received 84,000 for that. That's in this month's revenues. We also received the balance of the $62,000 for the special education grant. We talked about that last month a little bit. And the only other state grant that we still haven't received, which typically comes at the end of June, is the Muni project grant. That's 191,000. We haven't received it yet. I expect that that still will be coming. The remaining revenues were tax revenues of 177,000 and then we had 51,000 of other town service revenues. 22 of that was town clerk, 21 was a building, so they're still showing strong ones. And then we've had the boat launch, grant fees are starting to, you know, increase as well. So year to date, May revenues are 98% of the budget. We're pretty much right on where we usually are this time of year. My forecast for revenues for the year is approximately $900,000 over budget and for the, what, that's based on very preliminary numbers. That's going to be made up of about 650,000 of additional tax revenues over budget, town service revenues of 300,000 addition to budget, the unbudgeted FEMA grant money and contracted police services and additional building revenues as well. We do have $100,000 shortfalls in the grant revenues, which I talked about before, so that nets to about the 900,000 which I talked about. Expenses for the month of May were 3.3 million, 2.4 of this for the education, the operating, 700,000 of that is for the payroll and the fringe and then the remaining is for D govern report. My expenses forecast for the year, the only overages I see at this point are the ones that I've been talking about, which are the communications overtime, which right now is about 30,000 over with two and a half more paid periods still remaining in the year. A DPW diesel, that's also about 30,000 over. I do expect some credits coming from the Board of Ed on that, so that, I don't know where that's going to end up. Full-time salaries I talked about, I still expect that to be about 40 to 50,000 over and that's just because of the retirements and the various departments that we've had and the accrued time that we've had to pay out. And then town heat and water, it's possible that might be over, but I think we have some additional encumbrances there that we might be able to liquidate. We may be even on that. Department managers have been very good in looking at their budgets and giving me the transfers, like the ones you approved tonight. Investment balances were 29 million, 27 of that is the unrestricted fund balance and contingency calculations are in your packet. Those have been changed from the prior month. Contingency is at 113. Unassigned fund balance is the 4.4 million over the town policy. And I start to include in the report on ARPA schedule to show you the projects that we've approved that Carl was referring to before and show you the expenditures that are going to date. So of the 2,800, 2,82,900 that was appropriated out of the ARPA funds, we've spent 340,852 so far. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
The ECS, was there any communication back what the shortfall was due to? Population changes and graphics?
The ECS was about the $20,000 difference. I never see any communication on that.
No.
We never usually do.
I think the bigger number was special ed. There was a little bit going back and forth.
Yeah, special ed was just a change in some approved funds in that, so.
And that's the way it's going to stay? Will there be short of the number you own now?
For the fiscal year, yes.
For '22, we will. Unfortunately for '23, we budgeted at the higher rate. We don't know where that will come in now, so we'll see.
Anybody else? All right, thank you Sue.
Thanks Sue.
Item number 12, council discussion, communications.
I guess I've just been sort of overwhelmed by the last couple of days and what's going on and I'm not particularly prepared, but I, I do feel that it's very important that we put more out there on our, our website. I noticed we have the Japanese knotweed and the steep grant. And so much has happened in the past. It seems to me so much of import is. Carl, you don't feel that way?
No.
I mean, like what, what things do you think are important that we should be getting out there or not?
I think that there's a lot of information that the public would appreciate. It, and I, I, I know that this sounds loaded, but for instance, if the public realized what was going to happen with those used car values, and I know that's loaded, but information like that.
I mean, that's kind of.
And I mean, I could go on. I mean.
No, I want you to go on because I mean, I think if, if this is something that we want to talk about, you know, we need to iron it out as far as, you know, what are we going to put out there? You know, I know there's always been talk about, you know, the communications that, that go on in town and it should be from, you know, from the town manager. I can use obviously the last two days as a perfect example of why he shouldn't be wasting his time on that sort of stuff.
Well, he certainly shouldn't be on Facebook.
Well, and, well, that's the problem. So the things that we post, that we post to our website and we post to our Facebook page, those are the things that we share out to the public so that the public is aware of kind of what's going on, you know?
That's right. I just.
That's what I'm saying. So I just, I think we just need to know kind of what we're looking to get out there, what information are, aren't we putting out that, that, you know, that we should be? I mean, I think, quite honestly, I think one of the things that we should be posting and then maybe start doing it again, we did it before, was when we have our meetings. Because unless somebody's involved in the meeting and is on the agenda for a meeting, nobody shows. But then there's a lot of talk, I mean, because sometimes you say people want to know, but if they want to know kind of what's going on in this town, then let's get involved. You know, come to a meeting, come in and sit down and find out what we talk about and what we go over. There's a town manager's report that gives exactly what our town manager does.
And a lot of that information could go out there.
Well.
That's, that's a good example. It is a good example. I also think that our supporting what is going on, whether it be the chamber event, whether it be the arts council events, whether it's Laura's summer theater. I mean, I feel that we need to support what's going on in our town.
Well, and again, I think we've had that discussion.
And maybe, and just let people know. It is amazing how little people know.
Well, and again, does that really fall on the town? Does that fall? Does that fall on the town council, or does that fall on the individuals that are holding these events? And it is their responsibility. They can just as easily as we can post something to our Facebook page, right? I mean, no, they, right, they can't post it there. But I mean, so for them to get the message out, I mean, is it our responsibility? Is the town, I mean, again, I think we do support a lot that goes on in this town because a lot of us here, I mean, go to these events and are involved in these events. You know, but i- is it the responsibility of the town to, you know, how deep are we diving into that?
It's not our responsibility, but our town, if you look at the webpage, website, doesn't look like a particularly interesting place to visit, or move, or think about starting a business.
Well, most of the websites that we have are all, these are town websites, that's where we, we got ours. So a lot of municipalities use the same web-based form that we use. And I mean, so, you know, I don't know, and I got to be honest with you. I don't know how much websites are, are a driver. I don't know how many people actually go to, to, I mean, a, a website, you know, could it be tracked? I assume it could be tracked, I mean, and we can get those numbers and maybe we look at that.
It could tell us a little, it could tell other people a little bit more about our town. And if not the website, then the Facebook page. I just don't feel that a lot of information is going out.
I just, right, and I think all I want to know is like, what, what, what information specifically?
I've given you paragraphs before, and I would be happy to give you more.
Right, but I mean, a lot of that stuff, you know, again, it's going to be, how deep do we dive into that? Because as you can see today...
Not very deeply.
Right, and as you can see today, you know, the word gets out about our excise tax and the next thing you know, you know, the world's ended. But the problem is, is that I repeatedly, ad nauseam, indicated how that process works, and yet the people still came back with the same questions. So we put all the information out, very specific, that we didn't, there's no, there was no back and forth, there was nothing. The information went out, this is how it works. And yet people still ask the same questions. We posted then, we posted to, you know, our Facebook page about the process that the Board of Assessment of Appeals decided that they wanted to use in September. Same questions again. You know, so it's like, you know, you do put information out there, but then you just sometimes get frustrated because how many times a year do we need to answer the same question? You know, a lot of this also is just, you know, beginning, you know, we want to tell people about our town. Well, how about get involved? You know, I mean, if somebody says to you, well, there's things that we should be putting out, there's things that we need, more we need to know. Come to a meeting! Then we can talk about it. Come as a visitor. Explain to me and stress to me the importance of doing something different with a website. Doing something different with a Facebook page. So that, you know, what does the public want? You know, what do they use? What do they access? What are those outlets? Because I mean, we can only do kind of so much. I mean, if we put the information out there, you know, is that going to, that at that point, you know? I don't know. That's, I mean, we've, we talk about this, you know, a lot, and I just don't know what's the moving factor. What are we going to be able to access that's going to get people to where we want them to be? And to get them, I mean, we can put, certainly put information out, and I think we do put information out. I can tell you, I've never had one person tell me, stop putting out the information you put out. I mean, they're very happy with, with kind of what we do as a town put out.
I'm saying, I'm saying more, not less, definitely.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, you know, as opposed to, you know, other towns, I think we do a heck of a better job putting out information to the public. So, and I mean, I just need to know kind of what things that you would like, if you're, if it's, you know, an arts council project, First Thursday, you know, those sort of things. You know, it's also on the responsibility of those parties to, to generate the buzz.
And you know they do that. I'm just, I'm just trying to, I don't know, see a little bit more of Clinton and what is it that we do and who is it that we are? And I don't really see that. And for Kathy's example, Clinton events. And then a summer magazine came out, and in the summer magazine, there are only two events in all of Clinton in the summer. And I don't know who this falls on, but we're not getting a lot of word out. And I don't know whether we're so, I don't know, understaffed that we can't possibly do this, but...
But I mean, it's like when, when we first came out with the neon sign in front of the annex. Remember that was a big thing in town? But now we use it, and we post a lot of stuff on that. And, you know, so I mean, there, there are other outlets that we have that we post stuff and we put stuff out there. You know, and it's difficult. How are people getting their information? Are they going to the website? Are they going to Facebook? Are they going and reading in the Harbor News? Are they, where are they going to get their information? And that would be something, that would be the starting point of us doing something because we would want to use our time wisely in order to make sure if we're going to put that message out there, that we're going to put it out so the majority of people can see it. And I just don't know at this point, do we know what that outlet is? And maybe that's the conversation...
I would like to see, I'd like to see all of them used. And I'd like to see a lot of more information about, I mean, what's going on this summer, what we're doing, whether it's the capping the landfill. There's so much...
You have to understand what we control and what we don't control. So the magazines that go out in the newspaper, we don't control that content.
Okay, but we do our website, so that's a great, that's a great place to start.
And if you want to support other community events, you should have a policy that delineates who you're going to support, who you're not going to support.
I'd say we support everybody.
You gotta be careful. I've had some experience working in another community where an event happens and maybe the town doesn't want to put its...
Well, okay.
...seal of approval on it. So I, I'm not going to say that, that those circumstances would arise in Clinton, but you have to be mindful of who the town is going to put some support behind. There's a Supreme Court case on this with flags in Boston over what flag gets flown and what flag doesn't get flown. So you really should think through a policy of if you want to put other events on.
I just don't think the policy of minimalism is a good one, that's all. I wish we could talk more, and I wish we could communicate more, and it is one of our goals, to better inform the public. I mean, it is one of our goals.
And I think we have that discussion on policy. What's the policy and what do we want to do? Because it can't just be in, you know, an open umbrella that we put everything on our town website because then we could run into issues with that. So I mean, I think it's a discussion then amongst council members about what we do and don't want to promote, if that's what we're doing. I mean, I know you say promote everything, but that's a blanket statement that you can't do.
And it's not just promote everything, it's just, I'm not here to promote, but also to put the news out. Yes.
Mary has a job to do, I have a job to do. And we're trying to put out as much as we can.
Yes, I understand.
Clearly, that's not enough. So somebody needs to, if that's that important, then that's got to be somebody's job to turn around.
Well, not for nothing, I think Eric does a phenomenal job with the details and the, and the level of reporting that he does. I mean, wasn't there recently an article on the landfill and what is going on with that? I think he does a phenomenal job. And, and I think the problem is that not everybody gets that paper. That's our community paper. And it really fills in a lot of detail and blanks. And, and they have the listings of everything going on in Clinton as far as activities and stuff at the end of the paper. But I know both of my kids don't get that paper. And I'm constantly telling them, you have to sign up, you have to get it. I'm wondering if, I mean, it's not our responsibility to tell people to subscribe to that paper, but I think if they did, they'd be much better informed than they are. It provides a background and a wealth of information that you're not going to get unless you watch the videotapes of these meetings.
But I don't think, and here, I'll give you a perfect example. Somebody came to me and said to me, I didn't know about the budget. I didn't know about the budget referendum vote. And I said to them, really? And I, and I kindly said, well, it was in the paper, because it had to be in the paper that we were, there was an article about it prior to. It was on Facebook, it was on our website. It was all over the place, all over the place. And then this person went on to, to Facebook, and I knew him, so I contacted him outside of Facebook and said, how did you not know? And then, and then this other complaint was that, you know, we had signs, but the signs didn't have the date. And I said, well, because they want to reuse the signs, so they don't want to put a date on it. But I'm like, so that's a perfect example of, we put the communication out there, it's not always going to hit the, you know, it's not always going to be taken by everybody. And, and I don't know if that will ever be fixed.
I would feel better if it were there. And whether it reaches other people or not, I just would feel better that we're putting out all the information that we can. That's how I feel about it.
I get it. I mean...
And again, it is one of our goals, too.
Right, but again, it's, then it's a council discussion about what we're going to support. And, you know, what things are we going to, we're going to support town...
And what part of Carl's manager report, that, those kinds of things should go out, too.
Who's doing it? Right. Well, you're, this demand is asking for constant stuff to go out there.
I've never, yes.
And we're trying to work it into existing workflows between two people. And we, we can only do what we can do. And unless there's going to be somebody else posting and being an employee to do that, something else will have to not get done. We, when we posted about the, because we started to do that. We started to post about the meetings, when the meetings occurred. Nobody shows. So I mean, the important thing that people want to know what's going on, if people are coming to you and say, we want to know what's going on in town. I mean, if, if they say to me, that's my answer. When people come to me, and sometimes we really don't know what's going on. Okay, well, the first thing would be, show up to a meeting. You know, you can either make a morning, you may, either make a night meeting. And you'll know what's going on, the town manager. As far as the functions that go on in the town that we want to support, it becomes the issue of, again, you know, how deep down are we getting? Well, then the restaurant down by, you know, the water says, well, you haven't said anything about me. Oh, sorry about that. So now we got to worry about taking care of every restaurant down by the water because we mentioned something else. So you got to be careful with how deep you want to dive into this. Because it'll open up a can of worms, because you know how people, you know, people would want to be mentioned, they would want to be discussed, and, you know, if you're talking about them, talk about me. So it's kind of, you know, an ongoing conversation, yes. Is it something about the council then deciding what we want to do and how we want to move forward with this? Then keep the conversation going. I'm fully supportive of making sure that we're supporting our community, making sure people know what's going on here. But it, you also have to, on the, on the flip side, say, how deep are we going to get into this as a town? Because it could present some, some issues, that's all. And you want to make sure those are solved, and you can say to somebody, hey, this is the policy that we have in town. Because if there's no policy, then there's no reason for me to tell anybody why you weren't mentioned.
I would like to stay on the better inform the public. We'll just have the, we'll continue the conversation.
And just to point out, Clinton Events is not a town magazine, and the information gets put in there, I think it's approximately two months in advance. So it's sometimes difficult to make it timely. It has to be more generic information unless there's a firm schedule that goes in there. But it is open to the general public. People can submit information directly to them if they have things going on in the community. Because it's not a town magazine.
You just have to make publication dates.
Exactly.
And then wait.
And hope your event doesn't get canceled.
Anybody else?
We're still in council discussion, right?
Yes.
Yes. Good, everybody done? All right, 13 Chairman's Report. I'll just be brief. Just want to congratulate in, in all the Morgan High School graduates, all the eighth graders that were promoted, and congratulate them on moving forward. Obviously, the graduate, I attended the graduation, Carol and myself, it was a great event, great speakers, and it's, you know... When you go to events like that, you see what the community is and what you have in this community. And so it was something to be very proud of that, when we went to that, so.
Really nice.
Congratulations to all of them for that. And the eighth graders are, they're doing their promotion tonight, which is where Chris is. So congratulations to, congratulations to all the kids. That is it, we'll move on, because now we got another boatload of stuff to do. Town Manager's Report. So you have my written reports in addition to what I've given you in writing. This is a follow-up. We discussed earlier about partnership between the town and Ducks Unlimited and DEEP to replace the bridge that goes over the Hammock River. So we're making progress on that. There's preliminary funding under, under National Fish and Wildlife for replacement, for engineering expense. So that's at least a step forward. There is a field review that took place last week with some of the funders from the federal level, and they took a look at the project. It was a good way to have some back and forth in terms of what needs to be added and emphasized over management operations of the tight floodgates, species that are to be enhanced or protected, to give a little bit more information to make the grant application a little bit more competitive. So the state is, DEEP is putting together its information. Ducks Unlimited is working on their piece to answer some of those questions so that project could move forward to another funding round. On the written report, it did make reference to the steep grant that has come out. Earlier in the month, the state did a webinar laying out what the process was going to be, what the stipulations were going to be, and what the particular emphasis was for this round. Thankfully, the governor is now funding it back to the way, the level it used to be funded at, at half a million dollars. The desire is for shovel-ready as well as local match. While no percentages were thrown out, 20%, local match would be viewed favorably. You also have to close out any five-year or older steep grants. We had one with, it was in Parker Rex's hands. I believe that is now closed out by DEEP staff. They acknowledged, they acknowledged my statement to them that it's done, and they're moving the balance over to OPM, so I believe we're square on that front. Applications are due by middle of August. I'm trying to put together information now on potential projects that could be funded, that would have the local match preference, as well as be shovel-ready, since that also seems to be an emphasis. The desire is not to do studies, but to have something that can be implemented and done quickly. Your local match can't be ARPA money, it has to be local, local cash. So that will ultimately have to come back to the council at some point in time to approve the grant per the charter. And I've had you give me support resolutions to go with an application when it's ready to go. Affordable housing plan, I've reported on this for a while now. That will likely come up to your next meeting. The committee that you appointed is meeting tomorrow night to discuss the draft, and then they should be able to deliver that to the council for final action. Town Engineer for OnCall Services is out on the streets. I anticipate having that in, back in July, so that we can make a final award and make a decision on that contracted service. Doc Master, we've received five applications for that position. I've been coordinating with the Chairman of Harbor Management on next steps for the actual interview process. Our senior program coordinator has started. She is doing some outreach right now. I believe she will be Person of the Week. So that's, that's a positive note on that front. I gave you a conversation on MIRA and the future of solid waste. There was a MIRA meeting earlier where it became, became kind of clear that their desire is to push municipalities out of using MIRA as a service provider. There's a current level of subsidy that they're using to support a certain tip fee that may or may not be available next year. So we need to be contemplating our next steps. So at a minimum, it could be us doing it on our own. But there is, there are some regional partnerships where if you had multi-towns working together, it would make a little bit more sense instead of 169 garbage policies. You try and get some sense of cohesion. There is one three-town bid that took place already. It seems that everyone else is kind of doing their own thing. So there'll be more on that as time advances for where we want to be with positioning, how we deal with solid waste policy at the local level. It's all going to go to the same place, which is be shipped out of state, so the end result is no different. And that's it for right now.
Can I say a question, Carl?
Yep.
We had all those bid openings for various service providers for the town a couple, a week or two ago. Have those all been determined? Are those all out?
They were all, I gave Todd the green light on the award today.
Excuse me?
I gave Todd the green light on awards today.
Because I'm just curious how those figures are going to, if you have any idea how that will impact next year's budget?
The biggest, the one that has the biggest impact is the cost of petroleum products. So it's, it's high. It's really high.
Yeah.
So we built a cushion into the budget to be able to absorb that. It's a commodity. It's going to go up, it's going to go down, and right now, it's really high. If diesel hits $7 a gallon, if that's a little bit of a problem.
Kids will be walking to school.
Carl, about the steep grant and about the projects list, what, what projects are you, do you have some in mind for the steep grant?
Yeah, it's, it, my problem is trying to square the desire for shovel-ready to be, as being an emphasis for competitiveness as well as a high local match. So we don't have a normal pot of money that's set aside as a reserve to pay for local matches. And that might be something worth talking about, particularly with some of these federal dollars and federal programs that are coming out now where there's a 10% to 20% match. It's, it's a little hard to make that kind of a lift, particularly if we're going for big dollar amounts without, and just kind of craft that into the budget on the fly. So trying to figure out who's got stuff that's really truly ready to go. There's a lot of concepts, a lot of...
out who's got stuff that's really truly ready to go. There's a lot of concepts, a lot of ideas, not necessarily ready to go. And we're still stuck with the local match piece to be ironed out. And it's gotta be money. It isn't necessarily gonna be in kind. If you're paid for a study, that's local match. If you're gonna pay for what we've done in the past where there may be volunteer hours for STEEP, doesn't count. People doing staff time or in kind, doesn't count. It's gotta be hard cash is in the deal. If there's no finance, town money, it's gonna rank lower and be less competitive.
Will we be able to apply for this one? Given not having the match in the budget?
No, I, I intend to have something we can, we can craft up. It requires a little bit of review and effort to try and put together something that makes sense, competitive and hits the right buttons to make sure that you're at the top of the rating. You could always apply without match. You could always apply without being shovel ready and it will rank accordingly. Unless somebody else is intervening in OPM's process.
So I have a question. Dennis, you mentioned during the budget discussion that there are big plans for the undesignated fund. Is that gonna tie into the STEEP and our match?
What discussion was this?
During the budget discussion, you said there are big plans for our undesignated fund. The, the surplus of our undesignated fund, is that any way tied into what you're discussing, Carl?
Absolutely not. I'm, I'm not touching fund balance in any way, shape or form with this process.
What, what specific project were you alluding to in terms of big projects coming down the pike?
You just answered the question.
No, I'm, I'm referring to Dennis. Sorry.
What big projects?
Yeah.
Well, I think then we have a, or you had a workshop, I happened to miss it, a possible fire plan, firehouse plan. I think number one, that's gonna be a pretty big undertaking if it goes forward. Pearson would be a second one. I think those two right alone would probably be our two biggest. I'm not saying we're gonna use the whole undesignated fund for them. If I remember quickly, now that it comes to mind, I said to the people that these are projects that we would probably look forward to be bonding in the future. And that's why it was so important for us to keep a good bond credit because we may, no may about it. We're gonna have to borrow and do some bonding. Certainly not gonna use the undesignated fund up because as I said before, the undesignated fund's gonna be used in the future for all these end of the year surprises that we get because of fuel, electricity and other things that this budget is gonna have to encompass at the end of the year.
And the contingency, yeah.
Yeah, contingency. I mean, we got, I don't know, 114,000, 113,000 left. But.
Well, we'll see.
She's got about 50 or 60,000 dollars worth of salaries and stuff like that, maybe that we may have to cover. I mean.
That would be next year though. That, that would be fiscal year, the next fiscal year.
Yeah. So I mean, you know. Want any bigger projects than that?
No, I was just curious to, I just wanted to know cause we're talking about STEEP, which are generally large projects.
Well.
That's W.
There's, there's another one. I mean, you know, Tom just said there's a thing that's on the horizon someday is sores and things of that nature.
So W, in the same guise that the fire department came forward with their WPCC, WPCC, too many Cs, proposals, are they going to do any information update to us on what's going on with, with their?
Yeah, we have, we have a date set. So it's not till, not till later.
Carl, can I ask you a question that's way past due? And that is, I thought I remembered 500,000 went to family services. Didn't it do that? Didn't it move over there? ARPA wise?
Not one line item, no. But the buckets are there. They have to draw against it.
Okay.
They've only started the draws.
Okay.
We're also short on staff.
Anyone else?
Can I just say how much, I, this is not relating to the town manager's report at all, but this is, oh, wait a minute. I'll wait for item 15.
Oh, boy. Anybody else? Okay, item number 15, town council committee leaves on reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
As a matter of fact, I do. I just wanna say, last Tuesday after Carrie and I went to the Park and Rec meeting and I went to that Morgan open house for their engineering program, I was blown away. I was so happy and excited to see what Morgan has available to students that are not necessarily college bound. And it starts early enough in their high school career that they can actually move forward with the companies that are providing this in-house experience for kids and provide them with terrific careers that they can, they can move into straight out of high school, careers that will support families and mortgages and everything else. It was very exciting for me to see because the last time I was there was a million years ago and there really wasn't anything much for kids that were not college bound. And now there seems to be a great opportunity that exists right here in Clinton. We have fabulous manufacturers who are sitting there ready, willing, able to take a kid by the hand and walk them through the process. I was, I was very impressed. I thought they did a terrific job. I also, I know this isn't a liaison thing, but I went to the International Beer and Food Festival meeting, or Zoom meeting this week. And that is gonna be phenomenal. They have a lot of great stuff lined up, but they need a lot of volunteers. So if you need anywhere for setup and then to help vendors in their booths and then cleaning up. So if anybody knows anybody that would be willing to lend a hand, they would be happily accepted. So that's it. And the graduation, Morgan graduation was lovely. It was a perfect evening.
If I could just add to yours about the manufacturer, I think Bob Warner deserves a great deal of appreciation from the town for all the effort he has done to create the collaboration between the manufacturers and the community and the school. He was, yeah, he's tenacious and got it done.
Well, I went to the EDC meeting since Tom left town. So they talked about that too. They talked about the, what the event that they had there. And actually Bob was very, you know, talking very highly about Marco and all the work, basically that, that he put in, to putting that event together and getting that kind of rolling. So other than that, they talked about, obviously, there was some discussion that they talked about just tourism factors and talking about Pearson a little bit. But other than that, and the signage, and that was sort of what they discussed. Anybody else? Any meetings? No?
No, no police meeting. You had an idea, you know, cancel because of the Morgan graduation.
Okay. Anybody else then?
I went to PNC and, and the only thing that really stood out was tomorrow's affordable housing meeting.
All right. Nothing else. We'll move on to item number 16, which is to adjourn to executive session and invite Carl and Mary.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
All right. We are back from executive session. We will move on to item number 17, which is to give the town manager, the authorization to ratify the appointment of the public works driver.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Is it just the one?
All in favor? Good. Discussion, all in favor? Good. We're out. Thank you again, everybody.